Well, one's the microphone. Do we have two microphones?
No.
Oh, all the students.
I asked for two things to be put on.
Wasn't this one of them, Pat? The microphones? I thought the microphone was one of them.
All right, go ahead, Pat. What were they?
I'm sorry.
Hold on.
One was the, um, how do we, for our students, I'm sorry, we'll talk about that in.
And the other one was about language in the middle school. And so both of those things were supposed to be on this agenda. If I, I know we're up against a hard stock of time, but, um, they should have been on this agenda, so they need to go on the next agenda. I don't know why they, why they didn't appear on the agenda is what I'm asking.
So, the. One of them, you and I need to have a conversation because it needs to be in a policy.
Okay.
So the, the first, your first item needs to be in a policy.
Okay.
So we need to, we need to develop policy regarding that. And the second one was just a total oversight.
Okay.
So, yeah.
All right, so we'll put that on the next agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a first and a second. Ball in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Nine zero.
Move to approve the minutes of the executive session meeting on February seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? Ball in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Move to approve the monthly.
Wait, approval of monthly bills.
Move to approve the monthly dated bills dated March first, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of one million, two hundred five thousand, three hundred thirty-one dollars and fifty-one cents.
Second.
Any discussion? Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Number nine, approval of cell tower funds for DECA.
Move to approve the use of cell tower.
Okay, you can make the motion and then they're here. Go ahead.
Okay. So move to approve the use of cell tower funds in the amount of two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars for the DECA ICDC Orlando as presented in the packet.
Second.
Does anybody have any questions?
Please, we don't need a presentation.
Oh, okay.
Perfect. It was very easy for you. Unless anybody has, thank you for coming tonight, unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you guys so much.
If the funds do get approved, thank you all for that. And I just love the opportunity to be able to go down and go to DECA. I mean, last year we went to the convention in Georgia and it was literally like some like life-altering opportunity. Like just being there and seeing all the people that are like passionate about the same thing that we are, it's just like such an amazing opportunity.
Even getting to meet new people and like from everywhere in the world, it was so really fun.
So having been a former DECA, um, teacher, um, at the Warwick Area Career Tech Center, I was the DECA teacher for the career center for ten years and I took students to every year somewhere. Orlando is really a blast. So my question for you is, do you have a PIN that you're going to be trading?
So last year we had, um, the Block Island Ferry.
Okay.
I'm not too sure what it's going to be this year, but we will have a PIN. So that's always exciting.
Because that's like the, the icebreaker and how you meet all these, there's like seventeen or twenty thousand students that will descend in Orlando. And it is really amazing. But the coolest thing the students love to do is get, collect pins amongst all the schools that come. So it's really important that Pontiac Gansett has their PIN and that you do that. So good luck and do well and place.
Thank you so much.
Let's vote so they know. Ball in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you guys.
Can I just ask you, how did, how did you get to go, what did you have to do to get invited down to other?
So we, um, we do a competition every year on a Rhode Island level, so each of us choose like our respective category and what we'd like to do. So for example, I chose fashion, marketing, and merchandising. So we go and we are presented with a role play. It's like a situation that we have to come up with a business plan, um, given ten minutes, either with a partner individually. So you're given an example and then ten minutes later, you have to present in front of a judge saying whatever your business plan is and you have to assume the role of the thing. So you're essentially acting and using, you know, public speaking skills, creative thinking, problem-solving skills, all those different types of skills within ten minutes.
Yeah. Do you get the question ahead of time or are you just?
No.
Yeah. You get it right, you get it ten minutes before. Yeah, you get it ten minutes before. And, um, the way you, um, technically qualify for nationals is if you, um, place, uh, top three and you have the best, uh, score, uh, test score. So we take, so everyone takes the, a test specifically for their category. So mine is food, um, food marketing. So I took my test in food marketing. Um, I unfortunately did not place. But Mr. McLeod and Ms. Murphy have given me a great opportunity to actually go down to Orlando with them to see what I can do more as a leader because I am representing Pontiac Gansett as a state action team leader. So I like, I'm really thankful that I'm getting to go down and see more, different leadership, like and how I can like be a bigger part of, like, being a leader and what I need, what I did gr- uh, great, like as a state action team and what I can improve on. So I'm really excited for that.
That's a lot to you guys.
Thank you so much.
Number ten, Northwest Special Education Grant Presentation.
John, I thought you retired. We need you to.
I know, I know.
What happened?
Come on up to the mic.
This is new. Uh, so it's so nice to see some familiar faces. And for those of you who do not know me, I preceded Brad Wilson as the special ed administrator in the district for many years. Uh, and so I think we're going to give a brief overview of the school-based mental health grant this evening. Um, we, we presented, I think about two or three years ago when we first initiated this grant. And today we'll be glad to give an update and answer any questions you might have. Uh, just for those of you who are new, um, I had the opportunity to develop this grant with, um, a foster, um, resident, Lisa Conlin, who is a, uh, executive director of the parent support network. We joined forces, um, and were motivated to develop this grant, at least for me personally, after years of seeing parents struggle, uh, trying to find, um, specialized mental health services for their children and, and the challenges that our school staff, our excellent school counselors experienced, trying to help them through that path. So we thought we'd apply for this grant and fortunately we did receive, um, a one point two seven five million dollar grant over the span of five years. We, it's important to note that we jumped in or, or they allowed us to, to apply during year two. And so there is a two hundred twenty-five thousand dollar a year that we have not yet accessed. You'll see that in rollover. We are working with the state, with RIDE, hopefully to, um, be able to utilize those, those dollars and we may need some legal help wherever this Carol is now, um, on that. And, and so we'll be working with RIDE to make sure we can access all of the funds that are available to us. With that, Wendy Sousa was hired, the first hire, really as a really good clinical expert with many, many years' experience in the field to really run and implement this grant. And so Wendy, I'll let you, uh, speak from there. Thanks.
I probably wanted to jump in really quick. So just, so everybody's aware of the roles. John is not quite retired. He still has a piece of this and actively overseeing the grant. Um, that was actually built into the grant as a small percentage, uh, before my coming on. So that's why John kind of, he was there as a start. I'm kind of helping Wendy as far as navigating all the different pieces in schools and, and accessing the people right now. But John still has a piece of the budget and kind of overseeing that.
Very limited. I, I'm, I'm, just so you know, I'm working about, um, a few hours a week, uh, at most. Um, and, and so it's, it's very limited.
More like the, uh, grandest story.
Something like that.
Hi, everyone. I'm Wendy Sousa. Um, so I was hired last year at the end of December as implementation specialist for the grant. And really, I mean, typically we just use the language project coordinator. Um, so could you just flip the slide? So there is a specific scope of work, but it's pretty, um, nicely vague for schools in that there is, at its, that what RIDE will always say is at its heart, it's a recruitment and retention grant for school support staff. So that's specifically school social workers, school psychologists, and school counselors. But in that, anything that we can do to support teachers, TAs, any and all staff in school community in a way that supports the work of the school staff, um, the support staff also falls under the umbrella of the grant, which is really nice. So, um, we'll talk a little bit more about those goals as we go. And there is a very specific, um, ask in the grant that these funds contribute to multi-tiered systems of support. So I know there are a few of you are teachers and education folks, so you know that, that multi-tiered systems of support, um, is just a way to say that we're addressing concerns at all levels, um, universally, in small groups, and then for kids who have a, a more acute need. Um, so, uh, we don't have to go into each of these. This is just the general scope of work that we submitted. Good. Um, here's a look at the budget. So it's a very simplified budget. Again, one of the things about this grant is that we applied as a region, so the, the first LEAs that were funded were Central Falls and Providence, so single districts. Our grant was the rural grant that came out a year later. So in year one, we, we weren't even, the RFP wasn't even out yet. Year two, they applied. And so right now we are actually in year three of the grant. And you can see the total at the bottom is, um, larger because of kind of that carryover.
Can I ask a question at this point?
Absolutely.
It's easier for me to ask as we go.
Oh, sure. Yeah, no problem.
So that's giving the impression that yet your help offsetting the cost of salaries in the district?
No.
That's, so that's the impression that gives to me as I'm reading it. I mean, I don't, so what, what, what is that salary amount going to?
Sure. So the salaries, so the grant, um, and John can probably speak more to specifics, but the grant, um, RFP, the request for proposal, suggested that our schools needed, um, this grant for a number of reasons. Specifically, we had regions where we don't meet the recommended ratio for social workers. So in the grant was written and into our, uh, proposal, the hiring of one point five FTE school social workers to, um, support schools in whatever their strategic plan is. So for example, not this region, their real goal was to hire a full-time social worker, which they put their grant resources to. We did screening, we proved the need, they hired a social worker.
But what about here?
Here, that work is dependent on the school's strategic plan. So right now in, um, further on in the slide, I can show you how you're using that time. So right now in the high school, you have your share, so, um, Pontiac Gansett's share of the grant is forty-two percent. So forty-two percent of that social worker time is about two school days. So you have two school days of social worker time that the schools determine based on their own need how they use.
And who makes that determination? Superintendent, the principal? Have you worked with them much about this?
The, the school level for that social worker would, would.
Oh, so it would be Amanda or it would be Ms. Markov. So have, have you worked with them, Amanda? Great. Okay. Thank you. Wanted to make sure.
Just one thing I want to say, because I know we use the region and Pontiac Gansett also uses the word region. When we say region as far as Northwest, we're also including situating this.
Yes.
So, all right, just so everybody's on the.
That's what, but still it was forty-two percent, so I wanted to make sure that we're coordinating with the people that are in charge of each building to make sure that they're getting the help that they need.
Yeah, they actually determine their strategic plan. So, um, everything that they spend their money on actually has to be justified, um, through their own strategic plan. Uh, in, in fact, last year was, um, which is why also for the carryover, last year not a lot of dollars were spent because schools, um, were required to do a self-assessment and then develop their strategic plan. And that's kind of where I come in, originally at the first, that implementation specialist, um, the role is really based on like the stages of implementation science. So it started out with self-assessment, making sure all the schools were doing that, building their strategic plans. And I am also a certified school social worker, so they can use me however they see fit. Some schools are using me more for consultation, some direct service. I'm here at the high school on Fridays doing some direct service and then we do some meetings on system stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question on, on this, please?
Absolutely.
Who's, who's getting these salaries? Can we have a breakdown of who exactly is receiving money from this grant?
Oh, sure. So the, well, right now too, because the, we are hiring, one of our school social workers that was hired, was moved into a full-time position in one of the schools. So we're right now hiring for a part-time position. So the only salaries allocated are mine, well, I'm sorry, there is one correction. So mine and the one point five FTE social workers that were in the original grant, so the positions in the original proposal. And then there is in the, um, professional, the fifty-three thousand line item, professional and technical services. That's where also in the RFP, there's a contract with Parent Support Network. So.
So let's just dig with salaries for a minute. So this is year three and, and there's a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars worth of salaries. How much of that is yours?
Well, I couldn't tell you exactly what.
Best, best guess. Be, all right. So maybe next month you can come with a breakdown in front of us of salaries, who's getting what?
Sure.
Okay. Um, we have a little PTSD when it comes to grants around here. So we just want to make sure we're aware of every penny where it's going.
Sure. Right. I, I think maybe the clar- to clarify what direct service, like what are we getting as far as direct service for the amount of salaries, right? Because that seems to be what the purpose of the grant is, right?
Right. What are the outcomes?
Yeah, well, it's a little bit of both. So it's based again on the, maybe it would be helpful to, well, so we could do both. I could very easily break it out by salary. So you get direct service, your percentage forty-two percent of the social workers, and then you get forty-two percent of my time to be used however the schools see fit.
If, if the position is filled, but if it's not filled, what happens to the money?
So that money can be reallocated after the, like if it sits unfilled, we can move it to line item as long as it's not more than ten percent of the budget.
Yeah, so.
Right?
We could, so the answer is we can give you a full accounting of the salaries, uh, the items. It's, it's, it's information that you certainly can have. Remember, these positions are not intended to be permanent positions. This is a five-year grant. The positions that are hired are really simply to provide additional resources in the schools to allow the professionals in our schools to do the work. And so the intent is not to hire a bunch of additional staff and, and then assume that school committees and, and communities are going to retain these staff after. That would be nice if that was one of the outcomes, but that's not, uh, what we're expecting to see.
I think we understand that. I think the problem is it's a five-year grant. We want to make sure that we're getting five years' worth of assistance for our students because we all know the impact that COVID had on our, on our students.
Sure, yeah.
So we want to make sure that we're addressing the needs of our, of all the students in this building and that the money is being funded and spent accordingly. As we, and we feel like we have no, we had no idea. I didn't even know. We had no idea the money's being spent. And because this is a grant that we're part of, our school is part of, forty-two percent is a significant part of that grant, we should know where that money's going.
So can you give us the specific outcomes that you, you started in December?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
This is March. So what have you done at the high school?
At the high school? Actually, can you flip forward? Uh, one more, because they were asking for it. So these are some of the things that we have going on in the middle school and the high school. So again, like, the basis of the grant are multi sys- multi-tiered systems of support. So the bottom being all universal efforts. So the first thing is, on there, you'll notice is the suicide prevention curriculum for staff and students. So last year, there was a law passed in Rhode Island that all, um, staff in all the schools be trained in an evidence-based suicide prevention curriculum. And all students, grade six through twelve, um, along with some other requirements. You guys developed your suicide prevention policy also that was part of the Bruno Flack legislation. So that was one of the things we helped roll out here and the high school and the middle school, um, connect with MindWise. The RIDE put out a little late the list of approved curriculums. So that was, um, something that the high school and the middle school weren't expecting. You guys had staff trained in QPR, which last year was an approved curriculum, and come June, it wasn't. So we did, um, SOS. Actually, the high school did such a nice job on this that RIDE, um, our project manager requested that I bring them to meet the team. Um, so that's something that we supported both in the rollout and then I myself was here as backup clinician. Universal screening. So both the high school and the middle school are still considering this. There are a couple screenings that can be part of the SOS curriculum.
Can I stop you for a second?
Sure.
Just tell me what you have accomplished. What are the outcomes so far? Not what you think or all that kind of stuff.
We want to talk about physical, like what physically has happened, what physically.
What has improved for kids since?
So suicide prevention screening for all students and all staff at both the middle school and the high school level.
And that entailed what? A survey?
No, um, it was a class delivered in all the health classes to every, to every young person.
Weren't they doing that before this year?
Not this month.
Yeah, so they, so they were, actually, they were well-positioned. You guys have great, um, physical education teachers. They were well-positioned to kind of roll in SOS because they had been doing pretty similar, I mean, just like QPR is similar to SOS, the bones of evidence base is pretty similar, but it had to be delivered in fidelity. So, um, so we rolled out that. So you also trained all your staff in SOS, which is a curriculum. They, um, both of your schools decided to do that, uh, virtually. Um, they rolled out the connection survey in both schools, which is another evidence-based social emotional screener that's.
So all the things you've mentioned right now, can I ask the principals, if they weren't here, we didn't have that grant, would we have done those things?
So I, I don't think they would have been done quite to this level in terms of the SOS screener. I think a main component that Wendy hasn't spoken about yet, um, which was really why the state was having spotlight on the, the good work that our group was able to do was the real-time screening and getting kids immediate help. Uh, we had our support staff stationed in such a way that, um, as the curriculum was going on, teachers were keying in if students were showing that they were distressed or displaying any sort of, um, mental health issues. That was getting delivered immediately to our support staff. The grant did allow us to put in some extra time and some extra work to really iron out that, that system. We were able to have Wendy, um, on deck as well to help with that. That was a huge undertaking. We had, we had to make sure that we did not miss one single student who was displaying emotional distress and let them go home without making sure the support staff didn't check in and, and let parents know. So that responsibility was, was definitely aided by the help of the grant, having Wendy kind of assist with, with that process.
Okay, great.
Wendy, if I could just ask before you, just because we, we do have a public hearing tonight, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And we're gonna, clearly, we're gonna ask you to come back. So I don't know if you want to take a few notes of what I think I would like to know as a, um, for, for the, for the school. How much financially, what is the dollar amount that Foster Gloucester gets? How much, how is it spent? Who determines that? How much does John get paid? Who hired Wendy? How much is Wendy paid? And what does Wendy do during the day? And what services does Foster Gloucester actually get? So when you come back, we'd like a breakdown of those things, if that's okay with the committee. Does that please the committee of questions?
Can I also add a, a question? Um, just what targeted group work, if any, has occurred yet or?
So right now, uh, specifically at the high school, there's a lot of, um, use of the school social worker in the ALP and then some other groups that are being identified through the connection screener. So that talks, so again, that, that's the idea of the screening and then you deliver. I also am doing an executive function course, um, here on Fridays, so that's small group work. At the middle school, it's, um, they're still very much working on their data systems. They're looking at PBIS and how they would identify, uh, groups and then also working with Janice Robertson, the school social worker. Yeah, we've talked a lot about how, um, how she can refine, how she does small groups.
I was just thinking, because you're, you're having difficulty, you know, employing someone in a temporary position group work is like ideal, right? So because you're.
Yeah, so something that's.
Finish it and.
Yeah, so something that's also not on here that will very much be part of my job coming up will be the Medicaid reimbursement for non-special ed students. So Rhode Island is in the process and the project managers are in the process of getting, um, educated on what will, if they're in the works of like approving Medicaid dollars for non-special ed students. So that's billable. Mostly your school social workers are mostly, the folks would be billable. Uh, we also are working, um, with the ALP here, um, in the middle school. I know there is also an ALP, I mean, at, in the high school, but not the middle school. Um, and then could you do one more slide?
Wendy, can we, when you started in here, one of the things I'd like to see spelled out is, wouldn't the last bullet point, create a positive, safe, supportive school, which is something we've worked on hard in this building and in the middle school. So how do we address, address that? How do we answer it? Um, what people have you pulled in to continue that work?
So actually, one of the things that we're planning right now, um, we've been working with Renee on planning a mental health awareness day, um, like a large event, both for staff, in May is Mental Health Awareness Month, both for staff and for parents and community members. That will be hands-on, um, and they'll be basically, I don't know, I don't want to give, like, we're still working on the details. But, um, we'll bring in lots of opportunities for folks to get like kind of multimodal exposure to different agencies that are out there, um, do some prevention work, work with our student assistance counselors.
Okay. So, but I would really like you to address the environment, school culture.
Okay.
And how do we, what we've already got going.
Sure. So I, I don't know if we necessarily have a goal, a str- on the high school strategic plan. I know the middle school strategic plan, they're focusing a lot on PBIS. So they're using, um, a, a large portion of their funds for stipends for their PBIS team and folks who are already doing that work. So a big push is if there's already a place in the school that this work is being done or a team that's doing it, we want them to continue doing it and to allow them the resources. So that, I, I don't know, Pat, if you want to talk.
So that's money that you will give to Pat for?
Yeah, so each school in the regular budget has enough to stipend, um, has enough to stipend teams of five throughout, like every year, teams of five or teams of ten, teams of five for twenty hours or teams of ten for ten hours. Because PBIS were doing ten. So we built that in the budget. So schools would be able to, like, reinforce the work that folks are already doing outside of school, after school, on their own. Yeah. And again, they can also, like, Pat and I have talked, she can also say, you know, I don't need to hire an outside consultant or, you know.
They get that going very well.
Yeah, they can, excuse me, they can move as long as, we only have to ask for permission if it's over ten percent of the entire budget. But if she wanted to move something from supplies, I mean, most of, if you go back to the budget, most of the money sits in, um, professional services because it's to send people to conferences, to hire consultants.
So you're gonna break that specifically off down for us. Okay. And I'd also like to see what we're doing at the high school.
So I think you have a bunch of questions. Go ahead, Cindy. I'm sorry. So we appreciate your time this evening. I know we asked you to come back. If there's any more questions, we have to, we're gonna stop now just because of the public hearing, Beth, is that okay? Is there any other questions that you wanted? Do you say the middle school, the high school you wanted more?
Yeah.
More information. Details.
How do, how do we improve the culture?
Can, could I just quickly mention the PSN part? Because I think that for folks out here, that that's good for them to know.
May I interrupt?
Yeah, we can't. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. We're running out of time. And what I think we should do for the next time is prepare a list of questions that we can provide to them ahead of time.
Yes, I agree.
So that, then they know the kinds of information.
I'm sorry that we're, we're cutting your presentation.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We didn't, we didn't realize.
We have ten minutes before we have to stop.
Public hearing. Yep, thank you.
So Mary Ann, we'll just submit a bunch of questions to Renee and Renee will forward them over.
That way they'll have them ahead of time. So when they go back, they'll be able to know what kind of questions.
Does that work for you guys? Okay.
So if anyone, Amy or anyone, please think of questions. If you think of anything, that'd be great. All right.
Director of Finance, report.
So in your packet, you have a monthly revenue expense. Um, we started this process and we spoke about earlier in, in, if I, can you hear me? We spoke about this process earlier in the school year. Um, this is a breakdown. You can see the percentage of how much of the, um, budget that we currently are in has been spent. So we are going to continue to do this, uh, monthly, just so you can have an idea of where we are with respect to our spending. Uh, to update you, we have been working with four recruiters, uh, to fill the Director of Finance, uh, the business manager. manager's position. Um, we have more interviews tomorrow. Um, we, I will keep you updated on that process.
Thank you.
Great. Should we go on to your ten?
The tennis report.
Yeah.
It was in the packet. There's nothing for us to approve. I don't think we have to approve. You have to approve a resignation, Mary Ann? No, I don't think so. Just leaves of absence. Is there anything else you need to add, Renee?
No.
Okay, moving on. Let's go.
Approval of administrative assistant contract.
I make a motion to approve the administrative contract, um, as presented in our packet.
Second.
This is not a new position.
Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to add Shelley Pezza and will move in forever to the Wellness Subcommittee as per member's request.
I'd just like to remain, just because I realize that there won't be a representative from Gloucester on that.
I'm happy to have that. I was gonna, I was gonna say something.
So amend your motion.
I'm going to amend the motion just to add Shelley Pezza to the Wellness Committee.
Second. I'll just say, Amy, we weren't over the cut, so I'm glad that you decided. So thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Do we have time for the septic? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Septic system update.
So we'll keep this simple. So basically, we just had a complaint of a foul smell in one of the classrooms. I further investigated because I recognized the smell. We just had a backed-up, uh, storage tank. Uh, basically, the, we have a storage tank for the, the solids, which goes into a waste chamber that gets pumped down to the other end of the facility. Basically, the filters were clogged. We weren't circulating any water, so the poop backed up.
So are they pumped?
We, we had them pumped down. We had, there's, there's two parts to this. So because this is a fully autumn, um, automation-type system where there's multiple pumps involved, moving water, parts, pieces, multiple tanks, uh, we pumped everything down halfway. Uh, all the future pumping is set for April because it's gonna, you know, complicate the, the day with the smells and everything else. So all schools are scheduled for April pumpouts, full tank pumpouts.
Oh, great. People great.
Correct.
Beautiful. So now we're set. We're scheduled on like a yearly contract now?
So, nope. We, this all just happened on Friday. I'm working with the, the vendor now. He's putting a contract in place to move forward with. Um, they are going to also provide us with a full-out, um, you know, assessment of our working condition as we sit right now, and I will be able to provide you more information when they do.
Okay, thank you for filling up.
I think to, just to add to that, um, I don't know if it was clear what Steve shared, um, but we do not have an existing contract. The contract, I believe, did expire.
Right. The, the automation side of things, again, the, the chemi, chemical, you know, chemistry side of things with all the soda ash injections, all the pump maintenance, float maintenance, filters, um, we have not had a contract since 2018.
But you're gonna, moving forward, you're gonna take care of that. So thank you.
Just by asking, don't we need to go out to bid for this? Or is this something that we?
So we can, we can discuss this with the capital projects. I mean, this is a very specialized-type system. I would be very concerned to, well, yes, we can put that out to bid. I would be concerned with how many people will actually be qualified to take care of a system of this, um, you know, this complicated.
It's not, it's a matter of reality. If it's over 5,000, it has to go up to bid. That's a, that's a policy.
I'm just making sure, especially if, saying, unfortunately, with our track record of the scope of the sequence is going forward.
If it's over 5,000, it has to. There's no, um...
Mary Ann?
No, I just, I think you just need to share with the committee what happened, because just saying that it didn't get pumped, I mean, you need, they need the background of what happened.
So it's, it's really not that simple. So there's a very com, complex, um, septic system. There's multiple tanks. So specifically, there's a 12,000-gallon tank in the, the north side of the building goes into this tank. This specific tank wasn't pumped out for, since 2015. So lack of maintenance, because we don't have an auto, you know, a service contract, things were overlooked and filters got clogged. We didn't circulate water from one storage tank to another storage tank downstream, and that's basically it, just service.
So, so it has not been pumped since 2018? That's the last time it was pumped?
So I have, I have all the dates, this specific tank, because again, there is multiple tanks in the system.
I understand, yeah.
This specific tank was not pumped since 2015.
So this, like, that's a significant...
2015.
That's a significant, like, that's a long time with eight hundred kids in the school?
Which again, it's, it's not really that simple to just put it like 800 kids, because again, the, the south side of the building all goes into one system. The north side goes into this specific smaller tank. This specific smaller tank, I believe, was the original tank from when the...
But it's safe to say that there, this is due to past neglect or oversight?
Oversight of lack of maintenance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate it, Steve. All right, we have five minutes. I make a motion to approve funds for A and E.
Fees.
Who?
Architect and engineering.
Okay. Architect and engineering fees for material and manufacturing dust collection system at Pontiac High School.
Second.
Who's that, Ellen? Any discussion in the amount of...
There was no amount.
It's, it's in the pack, yeah.
Sixty-five hundred.
Sixty-five hundred. In the amount of 6,500.
Second. No, I can't second. I just made the motion.
Yeah. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Approval of funds for...
I make a motion to approve funds for the owner's project manager service for the materials and manufacturing dust collection system at Pontiac High School.
Oh, you jumped down a step.
Wait a minute, what, what is?
B.
All right, fine. Okay, B. Um, I make a motion to approve funds for architect and engineering fees for well-pump house improvements at Pontiac High School in the amount of $46,500.
Second.
$46,000.
Right?
Yep.
Uh, Aaron, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, nine, zero.
I make a motion to approve funds for owner's project manager services for the materials and manufacturing dust collection system at Pontiac High School in the amount of $13,440.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I make a motion to approve the funds for the owner's project manager fees for well-pump house improvements at Pontiac High School in the amount of $14,560.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Seven fifty-seven, we're doing good.
Nine, zero. Contractors insurance requirement and public comment. That's what we had.
You got three minutes. I think you may have...
Do, do you have legal advice for the contractors' insurance?
Yes. Um, after the last meeting, I was asked to review the requirement to our con, for insurance for going out to bid. So for example, if you hired a snowplow, you hired any other kind of contractor. And basically, based on what the, what the trust told me and based on two proposals that I was able to pull, both from Portsmouth and South Kingstown, the insurance requirements are like 1 million and 2 million. There's nothing in any of the, of the proposals that I saw that go as high as 5 million. So what I would like for you to do in the future is let's look at the RFPs and let's make sure that we're in the 1 million to 2 million range. And again, it depends on motor vehicles, it depends on liability, it depends on that. So I'm not asking for a motion tonight. I'm just telling you that I was able to pull similar RFPs and we will be working with similar RFPs going forward.
Thank you.
And again, they're gonna come in front of you to vote on. Once we, you know, get, we get organized. We got a little bit behind this year, but at least going forward, we will be bringing RFPs to you in, on a regular basis in a timely fashion.
At least we know what to look for for insurance requirements.
And I have samples if anybody needs to see them.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have, I don't want to rush public comments, so we can start here and then maybe if anybody has more to say, we can finish after the public hearing. Because I don't want, I, I don't want to rush anybody. We do have a minute. Does anybody? We have one person signed up.
That was me. I'll just address it via email tomorrow. It's fine.
You sure?
Yeah.
Because I don't want, I want you to feel like you're...
If anybody else wants to speak on public comment, sign up paper up here up front.
Do you want to speak right now?
Sure. Sure.
Can I sign first?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, we might have to wait now.
Twenty-five seconds.
I don't want to rush her.
That's all right. You know what? Just sign in now and then we'll address it after the public hearing.
That way you don't have to rush. Okay, thank you. It's my eight o'clock alarm.
Do we need a motion for the public hearing? Yes. I make a motion to enter the public hearing of the fiscal year 2023, 2024, proposed budget at 8:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, nine, zero.
Okay, so I'd like to, um, welcome Diane Brennan back as we move into the public hearing. Um, this is the budget that was created with the budget subcommittee work, um, with the building leaders, with the department leaders. Um, so there are many layers or iterations that we've presented. This is what we have presented to, um, and shared with each individual town, and it's also what we presented, um, to you at our last meeting. So what I'm going to ask Diane to do is just give the overview. We'll start from there and then we can move forward to there are specific questions.
So basically, I'll go through just what you have in your budget package and, um, as Dr. Palazzo had noted in our, um, budget address, we are really just trying to maintain our operations within the, uh, regional school district. We advertised for that. That was on page two of the budget document. And the actual request, we looked first at revenue and the largest part of our revenue is our local appropriation. And the local appropriation to both towns, the, uh, district is asking for 17,272,392 dollars. That's a local revenue and it's requested to increase at point 94%, which translates to 160,152 dollars. Um, you can look further at, at the distribution of the increase as it breaks down to each town. And that's based on two factors. One is on the population and what's called the adjusted equalized weighted assessed valuations as provided by the state of Rhode Island. You can look on that breakdown. If you look on page 12 of the, uh, budget document, it shows what each town is responsible for to actually support the budget. The way that it breaks down this year is Foster has an overall reductions from the prior year and that amount is a reduction of 122,847 dollars, which is perhaps a 2.11% reduction. Gloucester, on the other hand, has an overall increase and that increase from the prior year is 282,998 dollars for a 2.5% increase. You can look at the details on that as to how it breaks down on the document that you have. I believe it's on page 14 through 18. The next component that supports your budget is going to be your state aid and state aid is budgeted as an increase over last year of the amount of 433,220 dollars. That's based on the governor's proposal as it was presented with a slight reduction based on , uh, high cost of tuition. That looks like it will be different than what it was last year. The next component is tuition revenue and it's actually budgeted less than it was in prior years based on, um, expectations as to where those programs are going and the revenue to come into the district. You have other revenue, which you can look on page 13, and that's made up of a couple of, uh, reimbursable, um, shared cost services, Medicare costs, interest income, and some funds that are from categorical aid that are included in the general fund budget. There's also a use of the fund balance of 115,000 dollars, which has been budgeted to supplement the source of the revenue for the budget. And these funds have been used to help mitigate the requests from the local communities. And this amount is down from prior years. That's it basically on revenue. You can go forward on just expenses and there's basically four categories that our expenses fall into and that's salaries, benefits, educational programs, central office operations, and district-wide operations. And those increases you can see in detail. You look to... Document with page numbers and one document without... It's called budgetary increase by program areas.
Diane, I think that's on page eight of the packet that we have. Page eight.
And there's also a little explanation as to what each category consists of, salaries, employee benefits, educational programs, central offices, and district-wide operations. Actually showing you the breakdown, if you go a little bit further in the detail pages as to how the, um, the allocation goes to both communities and the equalized weighted assessed average. And the calculation for debt and for capital projects is based on the distribution of assets by the community or distribution of the assessed value by communities, where the other operations is based on population. Starting on page... Twenty, the expenses are broken, detailed expenses are broken into two categories. We have preliminary, which is non-salary items. And then we have on page... Thirty-six to the end are all the salary details. So that's what makes up, summarize really overview of revenues and expenses. And there's basically about four major categories in each side. Again, the local appropriation, which is the largest source of funds, has gone up by under 1%. Um, the distribution of those funds to each community has made a little bit of a different shift. To Gloucester, it's 2.25, I believe, and to, uh, to Foster, there's actually a reduction. And those are based on statutory requirements as to the distribution of how those funds are to be, um, set, allocated by each community to support the region. If you have any questions here, go.
I'd like to say thank you for building such a very, very reasonable, comprehensive budget and best care to the taxpayers and to the students. So thank you. A lot of time went into this. Does anybody in the audience have any questions on this very conservative budget?
Come on up. Just, um, sign in, state, and then state your name and address.
You can sign in right here.
Sorry, what did you say?
I just need you to sign in.
Sign in right here.
And then when you're at the link, you could state your name and town or address.
While he's doing that, there is one more comment that I just wanted to make and that there was and there will be, as you look to the examination of one year over another year, there was a large degree of disconnect and that was based on UCOA codes. So oftentimes, you're gonna find situations that have really looked like they're out of whack from one year to another, but if you look a little bit further down, you're gonna find that, um, those categories are actually made up into the actual expenses within another category. So I will say to you that that, um, it's gonna be looked at more when the year goes on, but we are under a guideline to do what's called UCOA. We actually have to send that to the state. They review all of those codes. But when you looked at what actually happened compared to what those budgets were from the prior year, they don't all line up nice and neatly. So I apologize. It's not anything that, um, it's what we lived with.
Thank you.
Hopefully those will get changed.
Good evening. My name is Günther Baich, Foster, South Killigley Road. I have only two questions. It's the debit service. Does the school have a debit from $3 million?
Is the school, do we have debt?
Debt service.
Yes, yes, debt service. Yep.
Does the school, school has, has a debt from $3 million?
Yes.
That's how we built the high school. That's how the school was built.
So if...
How long ago was this?
How long ago?
Yeah, around 2007.
Okay. And what is, uh, less housing? Do, do you get some housing reimbursement? What does this mean?
If you look on page 11 of the budget document, you're gonna see that there's a column called debt service. So the debt is 3.1. You're correct on that. So the debt is 3.1. You're correct on that part. But the state actually gives us 1.8 million dollars to supplement the cost of that debt. So right here.
Yeah.
So if you look here, this comes from the state, not from the taxpayers. The taxpayers pay the 1.2 million dollars. There wasn't also, there was also an effort that was made that we refinanced some of that debt when interest rates came down from the time that we actually had borrowed that. So there are some savings that have been realized over time for the district to take advantage of the favorable interest rates. So that has all been wrapped up into that. There is another schedule within the budget that shows you the debt allocation. And I think it goes out, maybe even on years. I think it's the on page 10 and I show it out to 2029. And we'll see where that, savings that were done based on the the refunding, refunding of the bonds in the unfavorable interest rates.
So to 2029 and then it's paid off?
Uh, 2029, I believe so.
Okay.
I'm looking at it. Hopefully that's taken it all the way. I'm not sure if it's going up.
Are there any other questions?
I have quite a few, but.
Well, is it on the budget?
Yeah, but if anybody has any other question, rather than go first, because they might answer one of my that I've written.
Start the ball rolling. Let's go. We should get her.
We should get her a stand.
I don't know that we need a stand. Laura Gattis Gloucester, Laura Gattis Barrett Gloucester. So I just quickly went through. Diane, probably most of my questions are gonna be to you.
Okay, I'll try to do my best. Go ahead.
I'm on page 20. I'm down in the weeds.
That's where I live. Go ahead. I think you can look like work more with me, but go ahead. I'll try.
So I'm about two lines down and under central office. And I'm looking at telephone expenses. Sorry. And I think that's probably the example where you were talking about, right? Where last year we budgeted 400 and that was probably unrealistic.
So, yeah, if you look at that and basically a lot of what goes into the evaluation of that is I looked at, and again, these are un-audited. The audit is not complete, but these were, we think, very reliable numbers. I'd say they're in that 90, 95% of accuracy as far as the un-audited expense. And if you look at 2022, you look at the actual expense was 2,311 dollars. So I carried that forward to actually try to cover the telephone costs into the next year.
Right. And so is there, do we have any idea why they almost doubled between 22 and 23?
I would guess basically on where they were allocated. I don't know if we grabbed all the allocation and put them all in central office as opposed to perhaps they had been allocated elsewhere in the past.
But I don't know if they doubled because it just looks like it wasn't budgeted accurately. Because it looks like the number, it doesn't look like the number. Because it says adopted budget than the actual number for 22. It looks like it wasn't budgeted accurately and that's gonna seem to be a common denominator.
For some of those, for some of those central office things too, some of those might be outlier years because the use was a little different.
Under COVID years.
Yeah, so you might want to look at like 19.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I can't say for sure, but, you know. I feel like I got a thousand phone calls.
And I will tell you, as far as just a general category, that a lot of times, the, when you look to try to understand where the numbers were coming from, the historical information due to COVID in a lot of cases was not always consistent from year to year.
Right. And I, I think that, I know that, I mean, I heard that before that the UCOA lines have changed and.
Oh, my God. I can't even begin to tell you, but go ahead.
All right. So now I'm under superintendent's office and I'm about four up from probably the bottom. I'm looking at technology-related hardware.
Yep.
This is the reason that this jumped out. And all the kids have Chromebooks, but all the chargers are breaking, especially on the green team. So I'm, I'm actually funding the charging for the Chromebook. So I don't know if this, you know, the chargers for the Chromebooks, if they're under warranty or if that belongs in a different category.
Technology you'll find throughout the budget. There are a lot of areas that the technology expenses are indicated. So I'm pretty sure that that central office would probably be what would house the technology for that particular area.
Which is that office?
I do know we do have some technology under each of the schools that covers some hardware as well. So I can't vouch entirely that your repairs are gonna be found within the central office.
Okay. But are they accounted for somewhere? Great, because we have lots of chargers that need to be replaced. And I just want to make sure.
I can't tell you how many they budgeted for, but I would say that I think that that's been recognized.
Okay. And now I'm on page 21. And I am two lines under the subtotal for business office. Data process, data processing services. We've got 000 and then all of a sudden we're, we've got 7,500 dollars.
I'm sorry, what line?
Data processing. It's right here.
Under which office?
Business office.
Two lines under business office. And actually relates to network services.
And I'm not sure which services those are, but there are services that we get on a variety of things that we have. And we have our software system and things like that. I believe some of our charges might be in that.
I think some of that also came from where, when we had items that were in, as Diane mentioned a little bit earlier, in the wrong item and the wrong line. So you'll see a 7,500 dollar increase here and at quick scan. I'm not sure where it came from, but we would have taken it from someplace else. We did a lot of moving from one to the other. But then if you look at the net change, that's, that's, that's where your eyes would go. With the UCOA code, some of them just weren't in the correct line items or line.
Okay. So what kind of data processing service do we need for network servicing, for network services? Right. So when I think of data processing services, I'm thinking payroll, things like that. That's data processing.
That's in the business office. That's in the business office. I believe that.
Yeah, but this category relates to network services.
It says data processing services?
But it says, it's in the business office though, Laura. It's under the business office.
No.
No, I'm not sure.
Oh, I'm looking here under data, under business office.
Right. But the subtotals are at the bottom. So, right. So the category.
So we can get the actual specifics on what services those are. Absolutely. If that's a question.
So that's a question that I should call you on?
And they can email. Can you email?
I can.
Okay.
If there are more, we'll just put it all in my email and I can.
Page 22, intersection, school management. And same thing. I'm noticing field trips come back to the 217,500 dollars.
Sorry, where are we?
Student transportation.
Field trips.
Field trips, yes. Restoration.
Oh, yes. Yes, school transportation.
Yeah, we love that.
That's for out-of-district learning experiences. Yes, especially tied to the regulations with work-based learning. So we're trying to fund that, yes.
Okay, awesome. Glad to see field trips come back. Kind of missed that Washington DC trip. All right. And now I'm on page 23, under math. And this one is really lucky. This may be a UCOA thing, Diane. But in 20, the adopted budget for 2022 was 35,000 dollars for web-based software and database. The un-audited 22 expense was 80 dollars. And the proposed for 24 is 15,000.
So I think that's, I think we're in the middle school right now. If I look at the code, that was the math curriculum. It was put in the math department and it got moved out. So the 35,000 dollars, from what I understand, this was not my budget in that year, but that was for the math curriculum. It's a purchase curriculum software.
So that was like a one-time expense?
Right.
Well, no, it's decreased. We, we bought a different program. We went from one to another. And now we have a six through Algebra II for this year, where before we had two different programs.
All right. So what, are we expecting those to change again next year?
No.
Is this gonna be, like, so this is just a one-time thing? 15,000 dollars?
No, no, it's, it has to be going to change next year. No, it'll, I'm sorry.
It's gonna be a standing items. We have to budget.
We have a contract.
We have, we have to budget for the curriculum. So that's a standing line item budget.
Okay. I guess the reason that I'm confused is that once you buy the curriculum, you own the curriculum.
It's an online curriculum. So students have access to online. It's a software that we purchased for math and we purchased it for ELA as well. And we have it six through 12 or six through Algebra II for math and six through 12 for English.
So this is basically a licensing thing for an online curriculum?
Yes.
And that's because we like to use Canvas?
No, it's not on campus, actually. It's, if you check, it's, it's, we use Envisions for six through Algebra II. And it's one of the green on Ed reports. That's maybe on the curriculum. Envisions, and we've had that at the high school. And we had Agile Minds at the middle school. So now we've gone with a consistent curriculum, six through 12, so that the students have that continuity from Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
And I'm on page 24. I'm under co-curricular student athletics. And it would be the second item in that grouping, transportation, athletics. So obviously, right, I have a car too. I buy gas. I know gas is expensive and buses are, it's tough. The reason I'm asking about this, and Pat, I can't remember what the exact number was, but you had said you were looking at some bills. And I remembered that it was like 8,000 dollars in one month. And so I want to know, is this 25,000 dollars legit? Or are we gonna be looking at budget overages?
So the 8,000 dollars in one month, I believe, was based on the, it's not every month because they don't, our athletics are not every month of every year. But we did work with the athletic director to get the fund, to get this budget. So I'm, I'm comfortable with what was presented. I don't know if you're asking if we're gonna be in a deficit for that budget according to the information we have.
This is just the middle school.
Oh, yeah, this is just, you're in the middle school.
When I had asked that question afterwards, Superintendent Palazzo pointed out to me that, because I was looking at the monthly check register and she said that the system is set up that no one can overspend from their budget. So there is a checking balance in place. I didn't know that, but it's, so that's another good thing that we have in place. So if that athletic, if that person was trying to spend more than what they had been budgeting for, it would be kicked out.
Oh, it'd be kicked out.
Or they'd have to get permission.
Or they'd have to get special permission.
To move someplace else.
Yeah. Okay, cool. Thanks.
I'm on page 20. So I'm noticing transportation 101 to 120. That's basically the same thing, right? That's transportation for the kids.
You're in the high school now or still, where, where are you?
Sorry, page 26, school management.
Okay. Okay, now we're PHS. Now the high school.
Yeah. So, so I'm looking and I see the overall category has dropped by 10%. And it looks like we're making some adjustments, but we're looking to increase the transportation. And so my question was, is that the kids?
Is that why?
It's PHS, yeah.
26, page 26.
Is that for the kids or is that for?
This one was. I think this is where we built in the work-based learning experiences for the high school. So I don't know if familiar you are with the regulations, but we are required to have those components in RCT programs and expect it to build them into.
That's the region three, region five. Is that for the CTE program?
So that's some of our students, we have those bus depots, yes. So that would be tied into that. So students who are not in, yes, in the region of statewide, we have bus depots. I think we have four of them. So we're continuing with that. In addition to that, we're gonna tie in some of our work-based learning. So if our students need a bus to go out and one of the van, more than what the van can hold, we would, we would hook that together.
All right, thank you. So I did have a question on 27, but I think you answered it when you went to the math question with that technology software for English. I'm gonna skip where I had 32. The category is co-curricular activities and athletics. And the, the two items that jumped out at me were health service providers for students. And it's been pretty consistent at 20,000 dollars, but this year it's jumping up to 45,000.
So that one is an increase in our, that one is our, I believe it's our athletic trainer. But I will. No, it's not, it's not, it's not. No, wait a minute. I, I don't have the breakdown for what that is. I can log into that. Email me. That'll be the information.
Yes, just go guess. Just go back to work.
Yeah. Sorry, that had changed something. Salary. Yep.
And then the transportation athletics, again, that's going. You know, it's been pretty, it looks like our actual expenses were 90,000 and we're budgeting for 100,000. Is that because we have new sports teams or we have new, or are we expecting the gas, price of gas to go up?
Some of that was that we had a contract last year that stayed consistent. They didn't increase the price of some of the transportation that we have. They honored last year's contract, but that's not gonna be the case next year. So it's an increase in transportation costs.
All right, cool. Thanks. And at the very last line, I'm on page number 32. We're talking about electricity for PHS.
Yes.
I had thought at one point we had some kind of deal with.
We do.
All right, but we're still going. I mean, I see that, I see that we, I see that we've, that we're budgeting